Yes, that's fine.
Have you made any arrangements?
Or are you going to leave this?
You're going to...
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Danil Borough Council, Monday, November 2nd, 2020. This is Mayor Jason Solento. Dr. Robbins, can we have a call to order and a pledge of allegiance, please? Oh, pledge allegiance first, I apologize. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is called Pursuit. This meeting of November 2nd, 2020 was advertised in The Courier on January 2nd, 2020, and as a teleconference will be then noticed on the official Danil website, October 26th, on the Department of Fulton Board on North Avenue, on October 26th, and again advertised in The Courier again on October 26th. Take a roll, Mayor Solento.
President.
Council President Baer.
Eric.
This is Burke.
Here.
Dr. Dunn.
Here.
This is Norverson.
President.
This is Rios.
Here.
Mr. Sigmar.
Here via go-to meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the October 19th, 2020 meeting?
Move it, Burke.
Second, Norverson.
I'll make some questions. Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigmar.
Yes.
Okay, number four, we have appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities, Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Task Force. I want to thank everybody who's on here, and I know you guys will do a good job. So I know the next piece is to do some educational pieces with the mental section moving. So I thank the council members, Stacy Norverson, to help lead the way on that. Before we get to item number five, which is the introduction of an ordinance, I just want to make a quick note that tomorrow we will have an election across our nation, our state, and our borough. I do say, if you are upset with how things are being managed, your ballot box is where you should make it known. Debate and dialogue is another key piece in our electoral process. Sending an anonymous letter and vandalizing a candidate's home is not a sign of respect to that process. In fact, I would go far as saying it's a sign of cowardice. As a community, we need to come together regardless of an outcome of an election and move our town, our state, and our country forward. We will respect the outcome of the election as that's what this town deserves, and we will move forward. Well, for me, that's the only way I know how to, is because I love this community. I know you all love this community, serve it. And I know we can speak for every single word that was inappropriate. So that's what I have to say about that. And can we mute the public until the public is on? Unless Paul, is that you? No, it must be on you. Okay. Item number five, we have an ordinance of introduction for 2020-15, the cable franchise renewal.
Have a motion, please, to introduce 2020-15, a cable franchise renewal.
Move it. Baer.
I'll make some questions.
Um, I just want to speak on this for myself. This is the, the, uh, Montech USA Cable Vision Franchise Agreement. This is being renewed. We'll have a public hearing and adoption at the next council meeting. The public, I just want you to be aware, this is a non-exclusive agreement. We do not discourage other people services coming into town. In fact, we've made overtures. That option comes into town, we will continue to work to get them into town. Underneath this, underneath this agreement, though, they receive an increase of a grant to the town, which was $10,000. They tried cutting us down to $8,000, but we were able to negotiate $15,000. So I want to give Rios, Dr. Robbins, who also assisted in that negotiation. We were able to get 11 boxes for free for the borough, as well as free of charge of the entirety of this contract, which will save the town thousands of dollars that we have been paying, as well as two locations. Please mute the, can you please mute your computers? Or phones? And we will also be receiving two locations with high-speed internet, one being Borough Hall and the other being the Danil Public Library. So that's what we were able to obtain within the negotiations. So the public is aware.
The red light.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second? I'll take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
This is Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigmar.
Item number six. Sorry. Come here. Item number six, we have an ordinance, public hearing and adoption, 2020-14, amended off-duty ordinance.
Move it.
Second, Dunn.
Yeah, at this time, we'll open the floor to the public for any comments or questions regarding 2020-14 amended off-duty ordinance. Without hearing any, that portion is closed. Dr. Robbins, please take a roll.
Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios.
Yes.
This is Sigmar.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have resolutions. Dr. Robbins, please go to the resolution.
Have a motion to pay a bill.
Move it. Baer.
Second, Dunn.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke. Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios.
Yes.
This is Sigmar.
Yes.
No motion on number two. This is a recognition of the acquaintance of deputies from the Office of Emergency Management.
Move it, Burke.
Second, Norverson.
I just have a quick question on the timing of this. Some of these appointments were made nine months ago. What the process is for these appointments?
There is no established process. Homer Mosley is taking an extremely active role in pulling the OEM together and other his leadership, something like that. He's asked at least three and even more will join deputies. It's under his purview to appoint deputies. In the past, we never had deputies or maybe just an age or one. And so this situation has not come up. It has some bearing because at least it's proof that if they're injured in, on call, at least wherever they are, at least you can show the insurance company and anybody else who asks that they are official, and so this memorializes.
And then I guess my follow-up to that would be that, then if that's the rationale, that if we could do this in the future in a timely fashion. I completely understand the last nine months have been crazy, especially for Homer and OEM.
No, we will certainly do that now that we have a precedent. Just recently, that Homer thought passed, and I had not thought of it myself. So that's a timing explanation.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigmar.
Yes.
No motion on number three. This is a resolution requesting permission from a partner, Community Affairs, for the dedication by Ryder for what's called a cumulative absence liability trust fund.
Move it.
Okay.
That's a Mr. Baer and Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Thank you. There are no questions. I will take a roll. Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigmar.
Yes.
No motion on number four, disdesigns, or redesigns. Michael Iamlo is a class A operator.
Mid done.
Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn. This is Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios.
Yes.
This is Sigmar.
Yes.
Man. No motion on number five. This authorizes Ms. Lieutenant Johnny Futter to make an offer to Daffo North Mall LLC for easements on the property located at 665 North Avenue.
Move it, Burke.
Second, Norverson.
Any comments or questions?
This is the Culver, right, Bill?
Yes, this is the Redler, Culver.
With your work requiring an easement, and since we've had no response to date, a meaningful response, we are not going to, we have the appraisal. We just received that last week, so now we will extend an offer to acquire the easement.
And how long do they, do they legally have any time to respond, given their lack of response previously, or?
There's a set statute for a time. It will be done a reasonable amount of time, and if not, it will be.
Okay.
For the legal aspect.
We're good. I'll take a roll. Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Yes.
This is Norverson.
Yes.
This is Rios. Mr. Sigmar.
Yes.
We now are at the point for the consent agenda. We will take six, Resolution 6212, which I'm ready to move by me, with one single motion and a second. If there's anybody who would like to remove one of these from the consent agenda, please say so now.
I have a price adjustment. On the, uh, for roofing?
Which resolution is that?
Number six.
Oh, I think you can just remove that one and then handle that separately, and then go through the rest of the consent agenda.
Yes. I told them to go remove. Oh, number six. Okay. So seven through 12, with eight minutes, can I have a motion and a second?
Move it, Burke. May I see your review?
Clarify, this is Dunn moving out by way of consent agenda, the items that are seven through 12. Am I correct?
That is correct. Seven through 12. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll. Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigmar.
Yes.
And back to six, can I have a motion and a second on amended 10-19-20, number six, an awarded contract for firehouse gutters.
Second, Burke.
Now, we would, would make a motion from the board to amend it. Just indicate specifically what that amendment is.
Uh, so the price change will be $8,288.
The motion.
Change price $8,288.
Now under the heat of the movement, right?
Yes.
So there's a motion to.
Clear.
Eight to eight eight. It was actually, yeah, it was.
It was eight five seven five, now it's been amended to eight two eighty.
Those increased.
It was increased to eight eight. Eight five to eight two.
Clarification, so.
So I, this was the second, this was the second quote that they just gave us. It was not the first quote. It was that.
Yes. Okay, Bill, any questions?
This was the second quote.
I was notified that the price had increased in the past year. I created an amended resolution, of which is in front of you, and that is the number that I received from the crucial people. Mrs. Rios tonight has notified me through clever bargaining, she's been able to reduce that, increase by half, and the number she is now presenting to council for an amount not to exceed in reward is eight to eight.
Thank you, complement.
Is there, is there a motion to adopt it as amended?
Move it.
I'm sorry, let me. We had a motion and a second to amend it. We didn't take a vote on it, so.
No, you don't take a vote. Now there's a superseding motion to amend the resolution that is on the floor.
Yes.
Now there's a, there's been a motion by Mr. Baer that needs to be seconded.
Second.
It's a motion to adopt it now as further amended, Bill. Maybe a better way to say it.
And that further amendment supersedes the First Amendment.
Correct. Basically sends that one out, it's based on, we've done that, now the amendment is set. To amend their, their vote on this. And just to, for clarification's sake, given that the amount is below the $17,000 bid threshold, the threshold is, the, the, the amount.
Thank you, Mr. Lurie. Mr. Baer has made a motion, and I interrupted. Could there, please hear a second?
Me, Burke.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke.
Welcome.
Jason, very good, we're good. And I'll take a roll. Mr. Baer.
Yes.
This is Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn. Mr. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigmar.
Yes.
Robbins, we have item number eight, council discussion, best practices inventory. Is Mr. Olson leading this conversation, or you, or?
I don't think Mr. Olson is present tonight. If he is, he can speak up and let us know. If not, I'm prepared to. Improve presentation.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All righty. Council, you've seen this, and most of you have seen this in the past. Each year, the Department of Community Affairs promulgates what's known as the Best Practices Inventory and distributes it to all 565 municipalities in New Jersey. It is designed to ascertain the status of municipal government practices in New Jersey. The inventory ostensibly assesses each municipality's compliance with various laws and evaluates implementation of fiscal and operational best practices. The inventory is regarded as one way taxpayers can evaluate their municipality's performance. This year, there were 29 scored questions and 31 unscored questions, generally in a survey format. Some of the topics were personnel, budgeting, financial administration, capital projects, currency, authorities, procurement, websites, cybersecurity, shared services, pilots, and affordable housing. The unscored questions contained opportunities for a municipality to request from the DCA additional training or advice. The state of New Jersey can withhold some of our discretionary aid if we do not answer a sufficient number of questions positively. This year, we answered 22 out of the 29 questions. So we will see full. Question, any questions if they're on?
So on those core competencies, I noted that a number of them were in the area of cybersecurity. I know we had the, um, the IT assessment. We had bonded earlier this year for some additional purchases and requirements in that area. Are there plans to increase our cybersecurity for our borough? Networks?
Dr. Dunn, that's an excellent question. I happen to be timely wise that we met with the IT vendors, TK One. Mr. Baer, Mr. Miller, Ms. Roth, and myself just last week. I had had a chance to review and additionally answer the best practices survey and did see that there were cybersecurity-related questions. I asked these questions both of our current IT people and of TK One. And I may note that TK One would be able to provide an acceptable, if not superior, level of cybersecurity. So in anticipation of our next step, that question asked and sent us back there.
Thank you.
Any additional questions regarding the best practices?
Is something that the council members have to acknowledge having reviewed and signed off on?
Not in written form, not like the affidavit for the budget. However, there is a date, which was today's date, that I will put onto the form. Turns out that the P. Financial Officer, Mr. Olson, gets to push the button and upload it. He'll do that tomorrow. It's due on Thursday. So, uh, yes, this presentation is necessary, and that's why it's part of the agenda.
I just have one more comment. This is more for the public if they are reading this and looking this. Item number 25, best practices, which is the anti-nepotism policy. So Finance and Administration Committee is working on a anti-nepotism policy that hopefully will be implemented by the end of the year.
Thank you, Dr. Dunn. Another point to ensure we get our state aid. Congratulations, Danil, we're getting our full funding from the state. If there's no other questions from council, we'll move on to council reports. Okay, council member Rios, anything to report? You're welcome. Council member Burke.
Sure, I have a few things. Thank you. Just to start out, the fire department was pleased to hear that they are, their parking lot is part of the Danil program. So again, they are pushing that through. They did have a couple of concerns, just to put on record, in regards to the retaining wall, having to be done with parking lot paving. So just to try to keep that in mind as we move forward with that project. And also, they just wanted to know about the parking lot being straight for the state, if that's being taken into consideration with the interior and stuff. Putting that out there. They will also be selling Christmas trees. They can be inspected around Thanksgiving. So look out for those. Our police department will be participating in No Shade November to raise awareness of men's health issues. This year, they are raising funds to honor former Chief Pelop by giving his scholarship to graduate DC unemployed charities. I'm sure you guys can probably leave for something. So people can still link to that, and it's really nice to do, and we can honor Chief Pelop. Also, I was made aware of some social media conversation regards to traffic enforcement and speeding down streets. I just want to make the public aware that Chief Smith came to the Police Committee last year and wanted to. I just want to make the public aware that Chief Smith came to, um, the Police Committee last year and wanted to acquire the digital speedometers, purchase those, uh, which we were able to purchase at the beginning of this year. Uh, those have been placed at different points in the community, at Borough, um, they're able to last for a week or two before they need to be discharged. If you are a member of the public and you feel as though you need enforcement on your street, I encourage you to reach out to our police department, they are very receptive, they will listen to you, and maybe your street can be added to the list based on priority for these to go. Um, Chief and his department will collect the data from these, and they will determine when and if an officer should be placed to run traffic enforcement. Um, we still do not have a social media committee meeting set up, so councilman Sigman, if you could just let us know of a good date for me, we'd like to get that Facebook page pushed out before the interview, as I know is one of Mayor's goals. Um, and just lastly, I just want to thank, uh, OEM and Homer Mosley, um, they're doing good things for our community, they had set up a bumper treat at the P. T. Halloween, providing information on preparedness, which we obviously need. Uh, Mr. Mosley is also working to create a meeting for us as, um, elected officials to understand the role and function of OEM, which is great to educate us on what's happening, um, and so I just want to say thank you for that. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President Bayer.
I have no report, as with, in, uh, regard to finance, but I do have a report on the fire damaged house that everyone sees when they go to Columbia Park. Um, as of today, we'll start to accumulate fines for noncompliance, those of you that have not seen it come down. That's what's going on with that. Uh, we also receive official word that the Art Color Project has received all the necessary approvals, and as soon as the bonds are posted, the building permits will be issued, and it's off to the races. Uh, and that'll cover it, thank you.
Thank you. But, Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, yeah, I have a, a few things, uh, today, first of all, I would like to wish Council President Bayer a very happy, uh, birthday. Yeah, uh, also want to thank and acknowledge the Parking Authority, there were, uh, some questions about parking and meters on, uh, front streets, so I want to thank them for their, their timely response and working with, uh, the Borough on, on those questions. Um, quickly, um, before I start my DPW report, um, for Councilwoman Merk and the Fire Department, when you are, uh, in need of strapping, or when you, if you will be, please reach out to the DPW manager, Alex Miller, to get that on the DPW's, um, schedule for the strapping in the lot. Uh, for the DPW report, um, the crew has continued cleaning downtown streets and sidewalks, daily park cleanups, um, made multiple roll-off trips to the dump after the last weekend of house garbage season ended, and hopefully that will be the end of our old roll-off, and we can retire that and put it in the graveyard where it belongs. I'm very grateful that they filled, uh, potholes, uh, in town, and will continue following, filling more puddles in the upcoming weeks. Uh, and just a reminder to residents that there is a process, if you know that there are potholes, again, please contact Alex Miller, he will put those on the list, and they will be, uh, filled accordingly. Uh, I mean, we don't know about them, we can't, uh, fill them. Um, we, the DPW is continuing to make rounds, picking up branches and leaf fans, uh, again, and working with PSENG on the tree remover on Danellin Ave, uh, clearing the catch basins, walking the brooks, and checking the head walls prior to the storm earlier, uh, late last week, uh, and also serviced, uh, the police chief vehicles, patrol vehicles, uh, and worked on more trucks, and repaired one of our motors, so we're very grateful to have a mechanic now in our department, we know that that's an asset, and thanks to police and fire for continuing to utilize that service. Um, uh, also pleased to note that we had a meeting, uh, last Friday, that Mayor Solento, Councilwoman Rios, and I, uh, sat in on, uh, with the members of the community who want to start a diversity and inclusion committee, um, so we're looking forward to bringing that to council, uh, hopefully in December, John, I sent you a couple of questions, um, and we can discuss, uh, after, after the meeting, so I know I've been recording on that for a while, so hopefully we'll have that committee in place to be filled, uh, January one of twenty, uh, twenty-one, and then, um, the last thing, uh, is I'd like to read, um, a statement. As many of you are likely aware, I was sent an anonymous letter harassing me over the weekend, an attempt was made to damage my personal property, and asking for the public's help in identifying the individual or individuals who committed these cowardly acts. If you have any knowledge of who these individuals may be, please contact the Danellin Police Department immediately. I am deeply concerned that a Danellin resident would act in this manner, this is not the Danellin I know, live in, love, and serve. For my entire life, I have lived it with a sense of purpose, a purpose to serve my community and make it a better place for everyone, including people like the ones who committed these cowardly acts. Even though you may disagree with me, I will continue to work for you, for your family, and for our community. To the coward who committed these acts, I have one message for you, I am not afraid. If your intention was to scare or intimidate me, I am sorry to tell you that no matter what happens in the coming weeks, I will continue to fight for the community I love. If you disagree with me or my position, I encourage you to speak with me, I think you'll find that I'm open to disagreements and finding common solutions. What I'm not open to is cowardly acts of intimidation. For those of you that have offered me support the past few days, both people I know personally very well, as well as dozens of people I don't know as well, thank you from the bottom of my heart. You are the community of Danellin that I know, love, and serve. And my advice for everyone, vote, volunteer, and serve. By coming together as a community, we will continue to grow. I commend my fellow candidates, Kenneth Ferrer and Tremaine Reed, for denouncing these horrible acts. I hope that none of us would sanction or approve this kind of behavior. Um, and before I give up my podium, um, Mr. Rios, I don't know if this is the time to give an update on the lighting ordinance that I had asked about, that we talked about, or you wanted to do it after the council reports.
Uh, I can do it right now, okay.
Do you mind if I just, really quick?
Yeah.
Um, regarding DPW, um, I do want to commend you as chairperson, as well as DPW committee, in very essence, DPW, as well as Alex Miller, Public Works, uh, Work Manager, um, specifically with the streams, um, and being cleaned out, uh, frequently, I believe noticed that when there's heavy rains, the water dissipates very quickly and/or doesn't flood at all, and I want to recognize the leadership who's made the DPW business operating, um, and that includes the DPW workers themselves, you know, they deserve credit and round applause, um, but also a resident the other day did reach out to me, and, um, I'm going to leave him in an anonymous capacity, um, well, we live on Second Street, there we go, um, saying that they haven't seen the town this clean in a long time, they were out on a, on a, on a raising five K run, and as they were running out of town, they noticed how clean the town was, and they commented to DPW, so just wanted to give some good news to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, there was a, as you recall, and if you are listening in, Mr. Rajah, you have raised a question at the last council meeting about, um, we're considering an ordinance pertaining to residential lighting, and then that was followed up, of course, by requesting, uh, council to, to look into this, which I did, and in fact, I wrote a detailed legal memorandum, but what I have, what I have determined is that, um, very few municipalities in the state have actually attempted to legislate in the area of light, uh, with respect to residential lighting, and there appears to be good, good reason. So, that means, first off, I should say, that it appears that a municipality would have the authority to regulate, depending on the type of regulations, the problem comes in both the regulations themselves and the enforcement. Um, some of the municipalities I looked at that have, at least on the books, and there's very few, but the ones that have on the books, any sort of regulations, get technical pretty quickly, and they talk about, uh, maximum vertical illumination, measuring light at, at certain vertical heights, and, for instance, on grade one, that's in front of me, just as an example, that, um, the maximum vertical illumination, when measured from any point on adjacent property line, at the height of five feet, and facing light, shall be no greater than point one vertical foot candles, uh, that's just by way of illustration, but, uh, so what becomes obvious as you look into it is that these regulations are virtually impossible to enforce, and that appears to be the reason why so few municipalities have been attempting to take on, um, residential lighting standards. Here's another one, the maximum illumination at any point on adjoining property shall not exceed point two foot candles. So rhetorically, you have to ask the question, how does a municipality ever enforce that? Does a municipality go out and purchase equipment that measures foot candle lights, uh, and I'm not even aware that there is such equipment to measure it, and then who, and then does a municipality train employees, or an employee to do that, or retain an employee to do that, because in order to implement an ordinance like this, you have to be prepared to enforce it. Now, how can you, how can you cite somebody for being in violation of the ordinance, just, you can't do it simply by saying, well, that light is too bright and shines on my house or into my window at night. You have to be able to say how exactly they violated it, and you have to have standards, and that's why, that's when these standards of foot candles and luminance come into play, and again, which essentially renders it virtually impossible, you know, to monitor. I did speak with one of the municipalities, one of the, one of the representatives of the municipality that has such an ordinance, and they indicated to me that it's not, it's not even utilized, because they recognized the problem, they more so implemented it for purposes of commercial lighting and requirements that they could enforce on new, new, uh, construction, but the residential they, it has not been enforced in quite, quite, quite a few years. So, in essence, many of the provisions, um, uh, because they're impossible to really implement, it might imperceptively in that, even if you implement an ordinance of this nature, which you have the authority to, you're not going to be able to enforce short of you hiring somebody or, or putting that responsibility on to an employee, and, um, training them, and buying proper equipment to make those measurements, so that you can present that in court, should the person who's charged with the violation say, I disagree, I didn't violate, I'm not in violation of the ordinance. And also, keep in mind that if you are enforcing it, by its very nature, the lighting would have to be enforced, the lighting ordinance would have to be enforced at night, which means you're going to have to bring in employees overtime, of course, if the police don't have the time, the energy, or the responsibility, all that they do, have to take on another responsibility, typically their only employees that are working at night. So, with that being said, you, you would have to bring in another employee out in overtime, so. So for all, and, and one other thing as well, that I, I think I did mention, every light that exists in town right now would in essence be grandfathered in to this ordinance, which means that any lighting cannot be really regulated, you can't go back and tell somebody it's illegal, because the rest of the environment, you know, they'll say, this is the same light I've had here for thirty years, and now you're going to tell me it's illegal, and they can challenge you on that pre-existing non-comforming sort of basis. So, so for, for those reasons, while I think a municipality may have the authority, or does have the authority, to come up with some sort of regulation, nonetheless, the reason why the great, great majority of New Jersey's five hundred and sixty-five municipalities don't have any residential regi, lighting regulations is just this, it's virtually impossible to implement and to enforce. So that is my, uh, legal summary on, on the issue that was raised at the last.
Anything else? Dr. Dunn?
No, that was it, and thank you for looking into that.
Uh, Councilmember Cole Sigman, anything to report this evening? Okay, then, really, get this audio back, uh, Councilmember Stacey North, anything to report this evening?
Of course. Um, okay, so for Rec Department, uh, we had our Halloween parade on Saturday, the ordinance turned out in the last seven years, we had over a hundred and thirty participants, our department is very thankful to the mayor and council for their support. Veterans Day reminder, Wednesday, November eleventh, at eleven AM at Washington Memorial Park, we have a small ceremony, please come out and show your support for our veterans. Food drive, next round of dates, on Wednesday, November fourth, from ten AM to twelve noon, and Thursday, November fifth, from five to seven AM, at the Living Home Church at Woody Road, items needed are canned food, food products, water, personal hygiene, condiments, baby needs, pet food, and if you are in need of any of these items, pickup is Saturday, eight seven, please contact Alex Miller, of your department, all information will be kept confidential. Uh, and then I have one last thing, a letter that the Municipal Alliance received, and it says, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, Municipal Alliance Base Award for Danellin is two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, the funds are to be utilized to provide substance abuse prevention and education programs to the community as outlined in your plan slash application. Funding for this year, July one, twenty twenty-one, to June thirty, twenty twenty-two, is based on the statewide funding formula. In addition to the base award, Danellin has been awarded an additional three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight supplement dollar supplement award, this is a one-time funding incentive based on availability of funds. So the total funding for the period of July one, twenty twenty-one, to June thirty, twenty twenty-two, is five thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. I, congratulations to Municipal Alliance for receiving this award, I know you guys did fantastic job on utilizing the money to help prevent it and education.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cole Sigman, are you there now, are your problems went away?
Yes, I can hear you again, um, and as everyone can see, I am attending this meeting virtually, uh, I am isolating until this Thursday after a close contact with a COVID positive person at work, and I believe that the safety protocols and wearing my mask at work are the reasons why I'll be able to return after only fourteen days, uh, so I ha, I want to encourage everyone, uh, to continue to follow the recommended safety protocols, wash your hands, wear your mask, and let's all do what we can to help, uh, stop this, uh, the spread of this, um, as for.
Just like that. Our call. Okay.
We lost a call.
Will you get a call back? Okay, well, for meeting per, meeting sake, I'll go into my report, Cole, when you get back on, we'll, uh, we'll go back into your report, I like you're there now. Okay. Um, speaking of COVID, uh, here's our COVID nineteen update, as of today, uh, based on Middlesex County's website, we have a cumulative total of two hundred and sixty-seven for Danellin, that's an additional fifteen cases since my, uh, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, uh, update, we still have, uh, nine deaths, as a reminder, these are cumulative totals, and are based off the information being provided by the county. Um, Danellin and Middlesex County's cumulative totals can be found at www dot discovermiddlesex dot com backslash total dash cumulative dash cases backslash, uh, New Jersey COVID nineteen information hub can be found at covidnineteen nj dot gov, um, please continue to practice social distancing and wearing up a mask, as Councilmember Sigman said before he was cut off, uh, this will prevent further spread, um, and, uh, prevent further spread, um, if you are in need of assistance due to a health crisis, please contact the crisis text, uh, text line by texting NJ two seven four one seven four one, or call the family helpline at one eight hundred eight four three five four three seven, we encourage you to utilize these resources during, uh, this challenging time. Uh, regarding redevelopment, uh, as Council President Bayer indicated, uh, the Denial Station, which is known as Art Color, uh, CME, our municipal engineers, issued a resolution compliance report, we say this is considered a engineering checklist for the developer, uh, once the developer, developer fulfills their requirements associated with the development redevelopment agreement, uh, posts their bonds in escrow, and addresses any items needed for the construction permits, uh, they should be able to start site work, um, we are aware that New Jersey American Water will construct the water distribution improvements, uh, with their own contractor, and will accept bids, once the redevelopment posts the estimated improvement cost and executes the agreements with New Jersey American Water. and will accept bids once the redevelopment posts the estimated improvement cost and executes the agreements with New Jersey American Water. In addition, I have spoken to Mr. Brunnner, who is the property owner and partner slash developer with J-Hub and regarding a banner or sign near the site that shows the overall development project. He has noted that he will have one up within the next few weeks. Just so everybody is aware, this project is moving forward. I know there's some comments on social media regarding the status of the Art Color, but it is moving forward. There's bureaucratic tape that everybody has to go through to make sure these projects are done appropriately in the best interest of both parties. So please be aware, the project is moving forward. We had, we do have another developer who's developed in town. Their name is Chelsea Builders. They'll be presenting a conceptual plan to the Borough Council slash redevelopment agency as the council and mayor are the redevelopment agency before the end of the year for the property address 440 North Ave. The development is being proposed as a commercial space on the bottom with residential on top. More information to come regarding this in the near future. Some of our capital improvements, Rowan Avenue, CME, our engineers spoke to New Jersey Transit last week. The application for the work is being reviewed by NJ Transit's insurance. We are, we are expected to hear that within the week regarding this project. Grove Street improvements, construction is tentatively scheduled to start next week. CME is confirming the exact date of the contract and will provide information to the borough, including the date that residents notices will be distributed and work will be started. South Madison Ave improvements, the contractor is acquiring their bonds and insurance and has indicated they are anxious to get started. CME, again, our engineer will be scheduling a pre-construction, pre-construction meeting next week. North Avenue Colbert Project, as you can see this evening during our meeting, the Borough of Danellin has been working to move this project along, having already made several updates throughout the year in our council meetings. Tonight's resolution authorizing our legal council to make an offer to DAVCO North Smalley LLC for easements on the 665 North Avenue. To begin the acquisition process of this piece of the commercial property is based upon the recent commissioning of an independent formal appraisal of the purchase value of the easements. The measure that was taken this evening is another step forward in making sure that the Colbert project moves forward and therefore addresses the longstanding flooding concerns as well as the FEMA flood map, most notably on the south side of town. The completion of this Colbert project has to be the first step in requesting, before requesting FEMA to readdress our flood zone map. So please, residents, be assured, we are moving forward and tonight's resolution is that step moving forward. Regarding Altish USA, we did make an update over the weekend, but addressed the public as a whole, who maybe didn't see it. Following the letter I issued in September of 2020 of Scoway Township, Rockville Township and Hamilton Township to the New Jersey Board of Public Utility, in which I requested the NJDPU to investigate Optimum regarding the quality and consistency of their service. Representatives from their, their government affairs department did reach out to myself and Borough Administrator Bill Robbins. Inform the borough that they have plans to upgrade services by splitting of, by splitting of two nodes, network nodes that would provide greater capacity to residents in Danellin. Nodes are used to distribute TV and internet bandwidth throughout a geographic area. Each node can service between 200 to 400 households. Therefore, if they're splitting them, it will be doubling the size of the capacity. So Optimum described this as a means to virtually add lane through an internet highway that allows customers to have greater bandwidth. Optimum has informed the borough that the node splits are estimated to be completed before the end of the year. In addition to other nodes, the borough are being triaged to determine if they can, if they have congestion, they need to be split to add more capacity as well. Just for residents are here, Optimum has created four channels for residents to inform Optimum of their issues. Contacting them via these channels will result in them troubleshooting, creating a trouble ticket. And a direct repair team will assess and address the issue. Visit them at optimum.net backslash support backslash coverage. Message them at optimum.net backslash chat, chat. Send a tweet to at optimumhelp or call them at 1-866-950-3278. Two more, three more, so don't worry guys. Regarding our community visual preference survey, as part of our community vision plan process, DMR Architects has developed downtown Danellin visual preference survey as a tool to better understand the community's preferences as we continue to welcome redevelopment of Danellin's downtown. The survey will be open from November 1st to November 30. It can be taken online via the Danellin website, www.dannellin-nj.gov. Or community mirrors can be obtained in a version of that Danellin Public Library or Borough Hall. Let's bring it back to Borough Hall to be counted. Survey will also be available in Spanish. Following all this, in December of this year, we will host a public meeting either in person or via telecommunication. Obviously, depending on where we are with COVID, and discuss the results of the survey. Really quick on Halloween, I just want to applaud and thank everybody, the entire community for helping make Halloween safe and festive. Especially on event, the Danellin Parks Recreation Director Alex Miller and the commission for making sure we help our 72nd Halloween parade in a safe manner. Thank you to the Danellin PTO for hosting Trunk and Treat at Washington Memorial Park. I know these were all unique, this was a unique situation this year, but I know everybody was very happy with how we were able to celebrate them. Again, thank you to the Police Department, Fire Department and Rescue Squad for being at all events that occurred that day. I do have one last question before we move to public. To the members of the Mar House Restoration Committee, is there an update regarding some plans for the property as it was requested earlier in the year? Where are we moving with this?
We've been trying to set up a time and date to have a sit-down meeting. Not all members are currently comfortable with sitting down in meetings. So we're going to have to figure out another way to get our opinions and ideas back in court. So hopefully in the next meeting, we'll have something to share.
Okay, I would appreciate that. I think the council would as well. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Arvison. Any other comments? You guys would like to say anything before we move to public?
Yes, this is General Mosley, OEM. Just wanted to, yes, just wanted to thank the council and you, Mr. Mayor, for, for recognizing, formally recognizing my OEM deputies. So that's greatly appreciated. A special thank, thanks to continual support I get from April Burke. And I would also like to just recognize my deputies for their work at the Truck and Treat. As you know, like they took the, they took the OEM van, got it cleaned up and they actually did the lettering that now formally has on there, Danellin OEM. So I, I really want to thank them for take, you know, participating in that effort, especially Terry Albersen and GP Mosley. They're not deputies, but they're on my committee who did the decorations and some of the planning as well. So I just want to commend my, my team for their continual efforts towards moving OEM into the 21st century.
Hey, thank you, Homer. Thank you for participating in the Truck and Treat. That was a good community relations for OEM. Okay, at this moment in time, we will move the meeting to public comments. Please state your name and address and let us know your comment, questions or concerns and concerns. Nobody? Without hearing any, we will close the portion of public comments. And I believe we have to make an emotion to go into executive session.
Yes, then the meeting ends.
We had Burke, Dr. Rios.
Okay.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
This is Burke?
Yes.
Dr. Dunne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marvison?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Ladies and gentlemen.
I'm back.
Oh, you're back. Oh, well, okay. Did you want to finish your report?
Do you know, do you know where you lost your call?
Okay. Cole, are you still there? Oh, he's done? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the public, at this moment in time, we have to go into executive session and we will not be back on the go-to meeting. So at this time, we are going to end the virtual meeting because the mayor and council are going into executive session.
And no action will be taken in these executive sessions.
No action will be taken. Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.